Five thirty, snuck up on me. Time to call our meeting to order for Monday, April the ninth. Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronain.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Slate Hanson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunsonis.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Leeson.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion for our city council meetings of April the second?
So moved.
Second. Motion Johnson and second by Rux. If there are no changes, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And the minutes are approved. This is the annual Chamber of Commerce week, and we have been asked to give it our official proclamation, for whatever that's worth. And we'll do, yeah, we'll do that, and then you'll have the opportunity to tell us what you're going to do. Whereas the Chamber of Commerce in Aberdeen, South Dakota, has contributed to the civic and economic life of the community since its start in 1984. This is the 134th anniversary of the founding of the organization, the community's leading business advocate organization. Whereas the Chamber and its over sixty members provide leadership and support to our businesses, professional and community organizations by promoting and fostering the business and economic climate of the community. And whereas a strong local business community is a key driver of our local economic prosperity, and a strong local business community creates jobs and opportunities for residents of Aberdeen, ensuring Aberdeen continues to be a great place to live and work. Therefore, we proclaim April nine through twelve as Chamber of Commerce Week in Aberdeen. And want to tell us what you're going to do. Please.
I'm Lisa Anderson with the Chamber of Commerce, and first of all, thank you very much for signing the proclamation. This is the kickoff, this proclamation is the kickoff for our week, and we always appreciate our Chamber members, but want to do it publicly once a year, just to do a little bit of fun activity and to do things in more of a robust way. Tomorrow and Wednesday, we will be doing surprise visits, twenty per day to, for a total of forty of our members. A lot of our volunteers will gather at the Chamber. We get on a bus, and we drive around town, and we deliver goodies, and make a little noise, and let them know that we appreciate them. We just kind of draw some names out of a hat, and mix it up, and do different places every year. Thursday is our monthly Business After Hours mixer, which will be at Dakota Bank on Main Street, beginning at five fifteen. It is free for all Chamber members, thanks to Dakota Bank. So please, if you would like to come, we would invite all of you to be there, and just let us know, please, by Wednesday if you will be there, and we'll put you down and let you in. And the entire week through Friday, we also have new, anybody, any business that has not been a Chamber member, if they would like to become a member for 2018, their 2018 dues will be half price this week. So, any questions? I did bring along our 2018 membership directories, which just came out a couple of weeks ago, so for your, for your reference, and your bookshelves, and whatever. So, thanks again.
Okay, thank you. Here's your proclamation. Next, on our agenda, Shelley from downtown has asked to address the council. Shelley?
Hello. Just a couple of things real quick, wanted to stop by again, and just kind of give you a little update as to what has been happening the last few months since I've been here. Last time I was here, we were right in the middle of our Small Business Revolution contest. That has been finalized, and we did not win, but we felt like we did as a top ten town out of over ten thousand nominations. What we gained from that, some of the takeaways, is it just really, from what I've seen and heard from people, is it really energized a lot of our businesses downtown? Oddly enough, it gave them more introductions to people that also have businesses downtown that they may have never met. We held a reception at the Capitol, and it was just a really great energy, a lot of people there, and it was a celebration of what we have here in Aberdeen on, in the downtown core. I think a lot of times we look at, what do we need to change? What do we need to fix? And I don't think we take enough time to just sit and look at what is really good and celebrate that. So that was a great opportunity to do that. With regards to that, then, because we are a top ten town, the Deluxe Corporation, which is the corporation that supports the Small Business Revolution contest, they are coming to Aberdeen and putting on a free seminar to small business owners or managers. So what constitutes small business is one to ten employees, and it doesn't even have to be Aberdeen, it can be throughout the region. And so what we're going to do is, we are going to put out the information on that. It is going to be May fourteenth, from eight-thirty in the morning till three-thirty in the afternoon out the Ramcota. And the seminar is basically, it's called Effective Marketing and Better Budgeting, which are the two things that they came away in Aberdeen with a lot of our small business owners stating they knew nothing about, which is, I struggle with marketing, and I struggle with my budgets. So they thought that that was the best one to bring to Aberdeen, and so we're going to do that. Right now, we're also revamping our website, so we're right in the middle of that, and hoping to have that launched here in May, so that we can hit our season of events, make it easier for navigation for people, a better experience, and really kind of show more of the spirit of downtown than we currently are. Our website is pretty vast, and it does include a lot of, all of Aberdeen, so we want to just trim it on down, so it's just the downtown area. So we're in the process of that. I handed out one of these panel cards here, which has our event dates for our concerts, and as well as Sizzling Summer Nights. You'll see Sizzling Summer Nights is a two-day event this year. It will be Friday night and Saturday all day. So we usually do the all-day Saturday car show, which we still will do, but we are going to add a Friday night event to try and get, like we say, more heads in beds, so that we can maybe get more people into town, have them make a weekend of it, rather than just a one-day, you know, start in the morning and leave by eight o'clock at night. So we're going to be putting in some family events that night as well, talk with the CVB, and figure out maybe some things that we can do at Wiley, or something like that, so that we can kind of do a whole attraction to Aberdeen that weekend. So that's a new change for this year as well. Farmer's Market, crazy days, July fourteenth is crazy days. Farmer's Market already kicks off in May through October, so we're gearing up for that. And parking is always the hot topic in downtown Aberdeen. Parking is tough, and that's a good thing. If you can't find a parking spot, it means that there's a lot of people downtown. So, like everybody says, it's not a parking problem, it's a walking problem here in Aberdeen. So it's, it's good. We've really gone through and made the process of renewals a lot more efficient, got a lot more people on EFT, so we don't have to track them down on an annual basis. And then last summer, we went through with Robin and some of the other team from the city with regards to the maintenance of the lots, got some of those things checked off the list last year, but we're going to revisit them this year, then, starting in the, in the spring and summer to get some of those things lined up and finished. So, that's, in a nutshell, a little bit what we're doing there. The second thing is what's called the Better Blocks Project, and we're teaming up with the Chamber, and, and the Better Blocks Project, basically what it is, is it's supported and sponsored by the Knight Foundation. In a nutshell, what Better Block projects do is they show the community basically what's possible, and how to transform one space into something completely different. That might be attractive to families, attractive to senior citizens, bikers, whatever kind of community we want to look at, and demographic we want to look at. They came to Aberdeen November thirtieth and met with several different groups. They held an open forum at the library to try and get everybody's input. From our standpoint, I told them that I had just acquired the small green space on the one hundred block on the east side, which is in between the Brown Law Firm and the Smart Heat Building there. The Downtown Association just required that, or acquired that on a twenty-year lease. For the money, I just can't, I mean, it was just dirt cheap, let's just say, so we're very grateful to Mark Tobin and, and Mark Melchow for that. But I had envisioned a musical space there, a little gathering space, and they kind of ran with that and some other things that we had put down and talked about in this open forum. What this is, is, what I need to speak with you tonight about is, is the proposal that we want is temporary, and that's one thing I want to get across. As you can see on the screens, and what you've had handed out to you before, is the Better Block Project wants to do some things in the downtown core. They're looking to do about five different things, roughly, but again, they're temporary, and that meaning, we will start the project, there's going to be some workshops on a Wednesday, Thursday night in May, but it will go from Friday, May eleventh, through Saturday, May twelfth, and that's the temporary timeframe in which we're talking. And what they're going to do is, they're going to come, and they're going to show us how to make tables, chairs, bandshells, things like that, a lot of plywood. Basically what it is, is it is a computer-aided router that cuts this plywood. You can just download a design to a computer, and they'll be able to cut the plywood, and we'll have volunteers and everything that are going to be able to set this up. So we've got a couple of things in that green space. There's a bandshell that we were looking at, with some park benches and things like that. Moving over into the next part is, they also want to increase the presence of just the businesses on the streets there. So they want to have little tables and chairs set up to show other congregating areas that would be good, maybe just under a tree, or whatever it might be. So we want to set up some, some little areas like that. There's also one, then, an event that are called Parklets, and you'll see one right there, and then on the next page as well. And what Parklets are, is it basically is the use of two, maybe three, parking spots in the street during that timeframe, of just showing something that could be, you know, can we set it up and have a little mini golf area for families? Could we set it up and have benches and seating, and cafe-style seating? Could we set it up and have a little trampoline park? Those kind of things. So again, being very temporary, but could be, in the long run, something that could be of seasonal use, something that's often pulled out and set up, just depending on where we want to go. So not looking for anything long-term at this point, but just the blessing of, of some short-term stuff. The other concept that they're thinking of is doing some beautification on each block. What we're looking at right now is the one hundred block, so from, let's say, the ward through the two hundred block, so that would be right before the Red Rooster there. So it'd be that, that two-block radius that we're looking to utilize during this timeframe. And so that block beautification might be vinyl clings in some of the businesses that we'll get in touch with, businesses that have empty, empty stores. We might, in those empty spots right now, put up some vinyl clings that maybe have artwork about what this building could look like if renovated, and some tips, you know, or, history about downtown Aberdeen. We've also, are going to be doing some pop-up shops, so we've been in contact with different types of artists and boutiques and things like that, of people who really don't have a space right now, and we're looking to have them pop up a store in some of those areas, making signage for them. That is, again, temporary, but again, just showing the community what could be in some of these spaces. The last one that we are talking about as well is, you'll see on one of the pages, actually the one that's up right now, they do have lights being strung across Main Street. We've got, again, it would be something that we would look at, talk to, obviously, the building owners, and get approval for things like that. But it's, it's really, you know, something, again, temporary, and all of the liability is held with the Better Blocks Corporation, you might say. So they hold all the liability for that. I know that Shane with Code Enforcement has been on our calls, we've had, you know, weekly calls here for quite a while with Better Blocks. Shane's been on those from a code enforcement standpoint, and he's been very integral in, letting me know, okay, what do I need to ask for? What kind of permits do we need? Anything like that. He said that the only permit that he thought would be needed would be if we would do a mural on a building that would be water, you know, could just wash off with water. He said something about an art permit, and then outside of that is, we would do an event on Friday night and Saturday during the day, where, with the musicians, where we might be serving alcohol. So that would be a permitted license, like we've done before on, on Main Street. But outside of that, it's more of, more of getting a blessing, or getting you guys in the loop respectively, as to what we want to showcase on May eleventh and twelfth.
Well, I applaud you for your efforts. Like you say, you don't know until you try.
Well, yeah, and that's absolutely it. I'm, I'm up here speaking, but the Chamber is also, I mean, they've been the integral one in, in pushing this forward as well, so it's, again, it's just something that we want to show people possibilities.
Well, I would just express, Bill, from my point of view, eagerness that we, as a city, be as flexible and accommodating as we can be to give you the opportunity to try these things within the, the limitations, but the flexibility of our ordinances too, and to do as much as we can to be encouraging and not a roadblock.
Thank you.
At any point.
Thank you.
So, you know, this, some of, none of you up here are probably old enough to remember when Mr. Mayor Hauck was in this position. His proposal was to put a roof over. So this has been discussed for a long time. This, that was back in probably the late sixties or early seventies, and he didn't really have a proposal, he was just speculating, what if we just put a roof over the whole thing, like, kind of like Vegas did over there.
Sure.
So, so discussions about how to make downtown more interesting have been going on, and I appreciate you continuing the effort.
Any questions?
Yeah. Brett, is that your understanding of what, what is needed for this?
Any type of signage is going to need permits.
Even if temporary?
Even temporary.
Okay.
And, and that's one thing that we probably need to discuss, is, you know, with the council, that we don't want to be a roadblock for this, but there, there's times where the ordinance are going to, are going to impede things they want to do. So maybe we need to sit down as staff and as a council, and maybe find a way to adjust the ordinance or redo the ordinance, so they can do some of the things they want to do without having to come back every time and get permission from the council.
Whatever makes sense to me. Lynn?
I have a quick question for Shelley. For the May eleventh through twelve event, your temporary event, will you be looking at doing the Beer Garden at that time?
Yes.
Okay, so that will need a permit.
I have the paperwork all filled out, and I'll take it to Mary. I didn't want to jump the gun with, with you guys tonight, so I have the, I have the paperwork all filled out, and I'll go see her tomorrow. And then the next step would be, obviously, talking with the building owners, the store owners, making sure that everybody is aware what's going on, how to keep them involved. You know, Better Blocks is even, I'm going around and asking people, what do you need? You know, do you need display shelves in your, you know, better display shelves in your business? And they're going to show us, it's this WikiBlock furniture that they call it, and it's basically made from plywood. It's just, it's amazing. So...
Does it look that good?
We'll make it look good.
I'm telling you, the thing that's on the corner in front of, that looks, to me, terrible.
Yeah.
So the sooner that gets upgraded or leaves would be a better, better thing for downtown. So, so you've looked through and investigated Better Blocks, and you don't see any issues with this organization? I, I don't know, I just...
No, absolutely not. I mean, it's a national...
How many, how many communities have they dealt with?
Tons, I mean, hundreds.
All over the world.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's, if you go onto BetterBlocks.com, you'll, or, dot org, excuse me, yeah, you'll, there's, and there's YouTube videos of, you know, which kind of shows time lapses and things that they've done. It's, it's definitely a very good program, and obviously, the Knight Foundation doesn't just throw their money to, to anyone, but, yeah, it's, it's very, very good.
These look like attractive plans. Everything seems to be templated, cost-effective, everything, you know, simple enhancements can really create the atmosphere that's family-centric, bring people downtown. Stringing lights alone is kind of a mood creator. So I like the idea of green space and gathering place. Looks good.
I want to tackle the alleys next. The back alleys, that's going to be a big one, though.
Hey, anyone else with anything more for Shelley? Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, I'll be, I'll get in touch with you, Brett, about, before we go further with any of it.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have two items in Old Business, offered a second reading for ordinances that passed first reading without significant objection last time. The first is eighteen oh four oh three, to disestablish the Board of Health. Anything new on this from the City Attorney's Office?
Move second reading.
Second. Motion Bunsonis, second. Ronay.
Mayor, I just wanted to clarify something for the council. Last week, when I reintroduced this, I had made a comment about Watertown having a, a Board of Health that was different in its scope. I misspoke, it was actually the city of Brookings that, that has their, their Board of Health conduct.
Changes everything.
Yeah, I don't, but I wanted to make sure that, if anybody, the three or four people who are, who might have been watching, that if they did check it out...
I don't know if I can support this anymore. Three or four?
Am I, am I exaggerating?
They also, they also have the city utility factor there, that Watertown has. Okay. Questions on the motion? Carl, final, reading for final approval, please.
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. The second of these is eighteen oh four oh eight, studying fees and charges for recycling. Need a motion for final adoption of that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Johnson, second by Rux. Questions or comments? Carl?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Item six is items A through E in our consent calendar, routine city business.
Moved.
Second.
Motion, Ronay, and second by Lunsman. All in favor of approving those, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Under New Business Tonight, ordinance eighteen oh four oh four, brought to us by the city attorney, an amendment to the city code regarding licenses and permits.
Counsel, I wanted to make sure that everybody is clear on what this proposed ordinance does. This deals with the manner in which certain licenses and permits are being issued. The first, and I will go through this in a little more detail than usual, but the first has to do with a surrender process that the council had adopted a couple of years ago for licenses, and we're adding an additional one that says that if somebody fails to maintain an insurance or bond that was required of their license, then that, that activity is consistent with them intending to surrender their license. So we've asked that there be that change to Section fourteen dash twenty-eight. We also have instances where the termination of a license may be in the public interest to be posted, and would like, and for that reason, we have proposed Section fourteen dash twenty-nine, again, where city officials would have information that a formerly licensed business is continuing to operate. They may, under this ordinance, post the notice of a termination of that license, so that their customers would know that that person is no longer licensed. We've also, in response to certain questions primarily put to us from our daycare licensees, are proposing a new Section fourteen dash one forty-four to, to give, at the discretion of the finance officer or our building official, the ability to waive certain requirements of the daycare licenses. Those requirements deal with a new location, a problem with getting the CPR certification. Typically, that's just a matter of issuing that certification. And lastly, with the child to adult ratio, but those waivers would, would not be longer than sixty days. And in visiting with our building official with respect to the waivers for a new location, those would be sparsely granted, if at all, because of the concerns about that. And lastly, has to do with the, a, a problem that we have on occasion with applications for city licenses and permits, where the licensee, or the, I'm sorry, the applicant is providing, knowingly providing incorrect, incomplete, or false information, and Section thirty-four dash one ninety-seven allows the city, in those instances where they have that information, to move forward with an ordinance violation as a public offense.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion, Ronay, and second by Rux. Questions on this? Come a long way, Brett, since you got here, and our licensing in, what, in thirteen years has it been, since, how would you like to go back to where we were with licensing and permitting? You've done a lot of work on that, and still more to do here, apparently. Questions on this at all? We have motion and a second for first reading. Carl?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonis.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson.
Aye. Motion carries. Item B is from Robin, a recommendation on bids for concrete. Robin?
We had two bids received, with the low bid coming from Wrighton Sudlow, who has done this work primarily for us over the last five, six years. As you'll see, the, their bid price was a hundred and forty thousand, roughly. We have a hundred and eighty thousand budgeted. We would like to have the bid approved with the understanding that we would like to utilize the full amount of budget available for this, you know, rather than trying to cut it.
A hundred and seventy-eight?
We can do it to a hundred and seventy-eight if you want.
No, no, is that what you're saying?
Hundred and eighty.
Oh, I didn't know if you were saying to the hundred and forty, or the hundred...
Yeah, to the hundred and eighty. So it's just a matter of, we recommend approval of Wrighton Sudlow's budget, and we would like to make sure we fully utilize the budget. I'm out.
Move approval, with the understanding you can use a full budget amount. Thank you.
Motion, Rux, second by Slate Hanson. Do approve this? Any questions on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. The next is for the sidewalk quadrant improvement bid.
Three bids received for this project, and they were extremely competitive, between the three of them. We would recommend approval of CWF's bid, and with the same understanding that we want to utilize the full budget of around a hundred and eighty thousand, again, for this one.
Moved. Second. Motion, Ronay, and second by Olson. You said the, the budget was a hundred and eighty, but the engineer's estimate says two oh two.
We were over, the engineer's estimate was at two oh two, but the budget is actually a hundred and eighty.
Okay.
So if it had come out at two oh two, we would have had to cut something out of the bid in order to make it work.
All right. So this is for a hundred and eighty? Questions on it? All in favor of approving, then, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next, Bob Brown brings us a recommendation on bids for transfer pump replacements for water treatment. Mr. Brown?
Yes, we had three bids to replace a transfer pump that was initially installed in nineteen fifty-nine, and has since rusted out and not functioning. We, the low bid was for B and B contracting at fifty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Bunsonis, second by Rux. Questions on what we're doing here, anybody? All in favor of accepting the bid from B and B, then, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Thanks. Next is a recommendation on, uh, let me see, next is seven, right, seven E, yeah. Payment requests for airport projects. Cody's not with us tonight. Lynn, do you want to handle this, or you...
Certainly. When we worked towards doing the runway decoupling seven thirty-five, as you know, we filled in wetlands and did wetland mitigation, and as part of this wetland mitigation, it changed the operations as far as the wildlife hazards out there, and so it was incumbent upon us to come back and do a reevaluation, which I think we'll find to be at the better end after the evaluation, and this is payment number one, and it's a federal requirement.
Move to approve it.
Second.
Motion Johnson, second by Remley, and we have two payments under this item. A roll call for the payment, then, please. Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson. Aye, motion carries. Uh, bills before us tonight from city boards, 1,122,713, Northwest Energy Utilities, 92,260, sales tax to Department Revenue, 12,289, US Bank, principal and interest on a loan, 376,420, credit cards to US Bank, 46,546, uh, MetLife, April Vision Premium, 549, utility account refund, 638, uh, water treatment plant insert for the respirator, payment to Doug Roethler, 149 dollars, AT&amp;T laptop service charges at the airport, 167, uh, a broom refill wafer at the airport, 3,025 dollars to MB Companies, overhead door for bearings on a door at the airport, 32 dollars.
Second.
So, motion, Slate Hanson, second by Remley. Questions on them? Carl? Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronan.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hanson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunsonus.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson. Aye, motion carries. Lynn, you sound like you're struggling a little bit, or you've got anything to tell us, or you just want to get out of here?
No, no, I want to go through, uh, my memorandum that I provided to the city council. At the last city council meeting, and forgive me, I'm fighting for a voice today, at the last city council meeting, uh, Councilor Ronay asked that I provide a written response clarifying facts to a recent editorial that was misleading about electrical charges and review, uh, of such charges of City Hall. And so at this time, I would like to go through a calendar of events to show the efforts and what, how this transpired and how we got to where we are today. And if you'd be kind enough, Robin, to flip to my computer. In the period of November 15th, 2014 to December 5th, 2015, the operations of the city manager's office, as well as human resources, finance, planning, zoning, billing, inspection, and engineering, were moved to the art building to service our temporary City Hall headquarters as we were doing City Hall renovation. City Hall, Hall operations then resumed full service, uh, within this facility starting December 8th, 2015. So basically, we started at the beginning of 2016, coming back to the facility. On November 15th, 2016, the city manager completes performance review for Al Roman, Director of Human Resources, and you're going to ask, well, how does this relate to, uh, your explanation? Mr. Roman's additional duties beyond human resources includes overseeing maintenance management of City Hall. And keep in mind, being I did that, uh, review as the end of November, I was telling him, I informed him during his performance review that the electrical costs were exceeding the budgeted amount for 2016 by at least 20%, and we still had another month to go. So Al was concerned. He turned around and, uh, he contacted Robin because, uh, and asked for Robin's assistance, uh, and talked about the increased electrical costs, and the reason why he went to Robin, Robin has worked with Northwestern on several different projects, thus he's noted for his knowledge, uh, for the proper contacts within Northwest system. And so right after my performance review on November 15th, Al turns around, contacts Robin, between the period of November to December, and I don't know the exact date within that two-month period. Robin there essentially then turns around and, uh, starts conversation early in the year with Northwestern Energy, as well as Travis Sickmiller of Mittler's Sickmiller Engineering to express concerns about electrical costs with City Hall and request a review to Northwestern Energy. Mr. Sickmiller was the mechanical engineer, an electrical engineer for the City Hall renovation and construction of the new library building, so therefore he, he was the expert within the design of these systems. I lost my place. Okay. Northwestern Energy completes requested review and indicates electrical costs are within the norm during a meeting with Robin Bobzine on December 6th, 2017. And so with the contact that we did and with the information that we had from 2016, as well as 2017, because almost a two, a two-year period went by, we were told that, uh, everything, uh, seems to be normal. No mention of the fact during this meeting on December 6th that they changed their rate. On February, between February 15th to the 13th, Travis Sickmiller is completing a review of the library building to determine recent problems with leakage in the roof. Mr. Sickmiller informs the city manager, he believes that the higher electrical costs in the library and perhaps City Hall may be related to the rate classification. He stated typically, most commercial buildings fall within the rate categories of a 33C or a 34C. He further stated that one of the principal qualifying factors to determine the proper rate category for the cheaper commercial rate of 34C was demand usage. He thought demand usage must be at least 100 to qualify for the cheaper 34C rate, and recommended I check our records. Elisa San was standing next to me during this entire conversation. On February 23rd, or February 22nd, uh, I was out of town, I mean, between that two-day period, 22nd through the 23rd, I was out of town attending Aberdeen Days at the Capitol. Uh, Lisa contacts Carl Albert, city finance officer, to interview him and ask him to provide historical electrical data on build, on city buildings. On Saturday, February 24th, Elisa San composes two news stories. First one, City Hall costs jumps 50% and new library electrical costs higher than anticipated. City Finance Officer Carl Albert is quoted saying from his interview on 223 or 224, that the electrical costs are not supposed to be that way. In addition, these costs are being looked into.
Lynn, can you scroll up your calendar of events? Thank you.
years 2013, 16, and 17. During this analysis, when listing and comparing monthly consumption and demand usage, the city manager notes the change in electrical rate. This report then was sent to Elisa San, Carl Albert, Jordan McQuillan, Al Roman, uh, Robin